Recording. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting on the hand of the board of select where the board of health townhouse on our charm July 6, 2021 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and also we're transmitting remotely. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say happy anniversary to Mrs. Davenport, my bride, fifty-three years today.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Didn't say fifty-three happy years, John. It was.
Fifty-three years today.
Okay. Out of fifty-five.
Your price.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Yeah, because on the anniversary, my mother said it would never last. There's still time. Minutes from June first.
Is there a, I see you parsed out the executive session for this. Is there a second?
I don't have it.
All right, motion to approve.
A second to have motion to improvement.
Little favor. Well, first time on our agenda is part of our series of periodically meeting with the different boards in the commissions, in departments in town. And tonight we have the Parks and Recreation Commission off a flying start this spring. How's this? What's the, what's the update?
Oh, the update is it's been a fun day. We have no water currently at the park. And we had Connecticut or Tishmore.
Connecticut Valley.
Connecticut Valley there today and found out some electric problem. So we've had electric company there, an electrician trying to find it and we're in the process of trying to get that fixed.
So that the pumping out is okay, just the electric.
Yeah, so we tested the pump and the pump is fine. They tested the sub-drive and that's fine. There's a connection failure between the pump drive and the sub, well, the sub-drive and the pump. It's me somewhere along, somewhere along the line.
Recording.
It's disconnected.
It's up underground.
So they're trying to find where it is. They did a task to try to find it. They believe there's a split off somewhere and we're trying to find the split off. So we're looking for.
And so the camp is over at Green Meadows now. Correct. Have you talked to superintendent about tomorrow?
Yes, we actually talked to him for tomorrow and the rest of the week.
Okay, good.
And just in case.
And I, I just, I think we should, we should thank superintendent again to be so responsive. Because I believe he sent over some people to clean the bathrooms and everything over there and that.
I know there was a custodian there when we arrived and Herb at TWB was also very helpful in getting in touch with Daryl at Green Meadows to assist with the situation. But within forty-five minutes this morning, we had a backup plan of Green Meadows.
Good thinking.
It was, it was great that everybody was able to come together.
What about the vandalism first?
So.
Do.
I'm monitoring it, right?
Doing the best we can. Can't watch it twenty-four seven. Well, actually, it's not twenty-four seven. Somebody's getting in there before we lock it up at eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night.
You suspect somebody in the evenings is going in and just throwing that stuff in the toilet?
So what happened was not an accident. Somebody, somebody physically lifted the tank cover and physically went in and took a cardboard toilet paper roll, you know, just a cardboard. And stuck it on the float, you know, the float's got an arm. So when the, when the float pivots, they shoved it in there. So it won't pivot.
Okay.
And then they physically opened up the trap valve there at the bottom that lets the water go through and took a paper bag and shoved it in. Shoved it in.
Okay.
Okay, like inches. And therefore, when you flush the toilet, water is unable to flow. It's absolutely, it's a, it's an effort. It's effort.
And there's no way the bag could have just gotten pushed down in the hole while trying to flush the water forcing it?
That flap has got to come up and then the bag would have to come down and suck down. No way. And it was in there. It was in there, you know, and okay, but if you have, when I have both of those, when you set the debt, that toilet paper roll, there's no way that it physically get in there on top.
You don't think somebody's trying to hide something in there, some paraphernalia or something like that? It's just.
That was. Yep. And obviously, somebody, you know what they're doing. You don't need to be a plumber to do that, but you know the effects of what happened, of what would happen by doing what they did.
Yeah.
It basically rendered the toilet not used.
Now, I know we have patrols that go through there. Is there the police department?
We do. Yep.
So there's, haven't seen anything.
I mean, nothing out of the ordinary, right? Nobody's taking a hammer or smashing anything. It's pretty silent. Just going in there, you're in, you're in by yourself and doing it and walking out as if nothing happened.
Have you found someone to work there?
I would think we found, you know, two people.
So we have, so we have two people that to work there. The one that we had earlier has found another job. We have a replacement, replacement as a college student. So we can, we can balance both of them, but we're only going to have the other one, the college student until the middle of August.
Yeah, oh, there he goes.
And he's going back to school. He's going, he goes to upstate New York.
How are you going to balance their hours?
So we got one kind of focus on the morning.
Yes.
And then the other one could kind of step in in the evening. The college student can do all mornings and some evenings, the other person will pluck through in other evenings, do the best we can.
They lock the gate up at night or?
They do.
Or is it the police take care of that?
Oh, I'm sorry. The police lock the gate.
Okay.
So the police, they, they come in and scan around to make sure everybody's out.
Yeah.
And they lock the gate.
Okay.
We are, we tasked to lock the bathrooms.
Okay.
Okay.
Those are currently locked now, situation.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't have any water.
Correct.
Right.
Yep. Extra trash barrels, get all the top.
Okay, so the, so there's nine or, I don't, seven, eight trash barrels there now. Okay. There is not a trash issue to my knowledge on the spray pad. I've heard of other places. I don't know if there's one on the spray pad. I am reluctant to put trash bags on this, on the pad. Because that's where you draw bugs, animals, et cetera.
You don't set that precedent having trash up.
Yes, yes. There are trash barrels inside the bathroom, both of them. There's a trash barrel just inside the fence of the large pavilion. So we're not talking the huge walking distance.
There's trash in the bathrooms.
Yeah. I mean, if push comes to shove, we can absolutely do it. I'm, I'm just not sure if that's going to solve our problem.
Dave, this isn't a new problem, you know. You know, you've been around where you've seen barrels overflowing after kings, stuff like this. It's just, you do what you can.
Yep.
We still have the dumpster there.
Yep.
We still have a dumpster there. So, you know, we had to do get employment this year. We had to make significant concessions on ours process just to get people to get in there. And we're doing the best we can. It's not favorable. But, you know, the entire United States is having employment issues.
Yeah.
Very, we have very popular programs. People love that camp and the spray.
You know, we've had to make some sacrifices. We haven't been focusing on meeting and et cetera because kind of focus on the, the everyday kind of stuff.
As far as camp goes, how are the members this year?
Seven.
Yeah.
And past year's service. I mean, they.
Even before COVID, even before COVID, we've never had, that I know of, a number since high.
It's been a long time since we've had numbers since high. And this week is our slowest week and we have fifty-one kids.
What would, what would the average be before this year?
Maybe twenty.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. More than double.
Usually we would have sixty registered for the six, throughout the six weeks.
There's a stagger on that, right?
We are a hundred and twenty-something registered person. That's kids registered, obviously multiple weeks or whatever. We actually had to close out week three and week six because there's seventy kids. And staffing wise, we just don't have it. Even last week, as I was taking in registrations and entering things and I saw the numbers climbing, I was in contact with Joey Barney, the director, and said, any way we can find another counselor because I don't want people away. And he was great. He was able to find counselors to come in and help. But it's, it's been great.
Well, it's great to have Joey back in town. That's certainly a good thing. I want to make my personal observation. I think you guys are doing the right thing by closing the park. Now, it's been a, a subject of discussion. But I mean, I've known camp going on since back in the day when, when she's did the chair. And that was a decision the board made back then and I still think it's the right decision. You have the safety of the children as paramount. I think the vast majority of people understand that. It can be a bit of an inconvenience. I get that. Feel like, oh, my gosh, I should get to use it. But you've got to see the bigger picture and I think you guys are doing the right thing, in my opinion.
And we know that some people feel there's a hardship, like they can't afford to use camp. There are ways around.
Always has been.
And we offer the day-by-day pay now too. Just sign up for Wednesday before, but this year we have the record numbers. So it's great. It's a problem to have.
Do you have an inventory of all your equipment? Brakes, wheelbarrows.
Not on paper.
That's the question.
We have an inventory of our, of our athletic equipment.
Yeah.
Like baseball equipment and soccer, although soccer, there's not, there's nothing really. Well, if you, well, they keep using the kids in their own. We have some. But we have, we have an inventory of baseball. You know, we, we bring in the coaches, right? Give them their, a bag. Then we, you know, we get returned and we have medical, medical kits that we give them. So that we have, but no.
You get a chance.
You can do that.
We got coming up for the fall for programs.
Soccer.
Just, just the soccer program.
There's talk of, of, of baseball.
So talk of, so talk of a fall baseball. Yeah, those are in the initial phases of conversation right now. Obviously.
Get ready for winter festival.
Numbers, yeah, the numbers, right.
You have softball.
We do not have softball. Anybody that wants to play softball goes through. They do use our field as part of the arrangement that we have in there. But we never had, we never had enough interest. I can't say never. In the years that I've been on it, there's not enough interest to, to give us a team.
We, my daughter played with that one, it was forty years ago.
Yeah, we used to have, back when Mary Kate, the heritage, she's the mother of the, Dave, that's got to be twenty, twenty-five years ago, probably. We had three or four teams at that point.
No fall with ball tournaments, anything like that?
So there's talk. There's talk. We're, we're in the sessions. We, we, we used to do that in August.
Yep.
So it's been three years and the numbers have declined every year. So we're looking to move it out of August into September, October.
Less hot.
Uh, yeah.
More people.
Less vacation. Around, yeah, less vacation.
Just have to find that sweet spot between, uh.
Yeah.
Ball sports.
Yeah.
And.
They'd be fun. Good community thing.
Absolutely. And I think last, was it last year or the year before, we got BFW?
The last couple of years. I know the BFW has been there doing the hot dogs and everything. Maybe all, everything.
The numbers have declined, so we're just looking for different options. Get out of the summer, get out of the vacation mode. Because it's usually, usually mid, late August, which is when people are, you know, getting ready to go back to school, taking their vacation, taking their time off.
Yeah. Great. Well, any other questions? Thank you. Thanks for the report. You've got a lot going on. We appreciate it.
I think I want to be clear that, you know, we appreciate you coming in and giving us a status report. You guys are your independent agency and you do a great job and we just appreciate being in the.
Yeah, you know, I mean, John, I, I appreciate that. And I know I'll speak, I'll give you my opinion, you know, first of all. Carrie, Brett, everybody. Putting in a lot of time, a lot of time. The, I have a concern that the current model that we have right now is not working. It's not working. The expectation is that when things happen, we're walking out of our jobs. We work eight to four. And that can't be sustainable. I've taken a lot of time.
You want to lobby back for director, Dave, like you remember those days?
I, actually, those are probably before me. But the way it is right now, people are walking out of their real eight-to-four jobs to support these things for hours. And it's becoming problematic.
You've had a lot of things you've had to.
This year, you know, this year has, has been worse than ever, but it's been every year. It's been every year. It's just, uh, it's, it's difficult to keep up. And there's more to come. I mean, every time Spray Park people come, they're coming next week or whatever. Okay, I've been walking out of my eight-to-four job. I walked, last week I walked out of meetings and it's becoming a problem. I'm just.
We can wait.
We try to, you know, with the employment of the person, we try to, we try to mingle with the DPW and kind of shift and, and share.
So is that something you think like a park commissioner, like you're there all day long or something like a director of some sort would use?
Well. There used to be.
It used to be somebody.
Like it wouldn't be just a groundskeeper or you'd have somebody that would be like a facilities manager.
Somebody in the office.
Yeah.
I'll personally, in my opinion, is Kristen's hours are too short. There's more work than the four days a week, eight to two. We need to have somebody who has decision-making abilities. Call him a director. That's probably the best title. That person, that person, in my opinion, would also be the person who's going to run to the park when you got problems.
I think you go back to the days like Jay was the director, he had Sue was the clerk, you know, was, they managed the day-to-day.
Absolutely.
And the board.
And it kind of, it kind of, it kind of restricts us in what we want to do. You know, there's more, there's more things that we can do, you know, bus trips here, bus trips there, getting more things involved. We don't have the capacity to do that.
Back then, park director, most of your job, movie nights, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Non-sports activities that they were in charge of.
There's a lot of.
We'd like to get back to that.
You know, like shuffleboard and horseshoe or something.
It's just hard.
There's a lot of work that go on after hours. Which I understand is a lot of work that's going on during hours, which is becoming. It's not just me.
I'm going to rest the park.
So.
It'll look boring.
I don't look worried. So. I'm telling you, it's just my opinions. Yeah, gentlemen. Carrie, sure as that, that's their opinion. I'm just, I've done this, I've done this six years.
And I spent all day at the park or at the camp.
And last year when she decoded protocols for the park, she was up after midnight doing these kind of things.
Knowing something that would benefit the town is, oh, you know.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, and that's the thing, right? You, you want to help people out. It sometimes just becomes problems. I mean, I. Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, you know.
Don't you guys got anything?
No, the other thing is, you know, the truck.
Right.
That would help us immensely.
Point of discussion for us as we talk about vehicle replacement.
Yeah, because right now we're using personal vehicles to transport the trailer. We need to put the tractors on it to go over to cut TWB. We use it to, if we need lumber, we use personal trucks. We use to get gas, which is now changed with the DPW.
Thank you for your help with that.
Yeah, absolutely. But every time we go to a store to get something that we can't get online, we use our personal vehicles to do that most. And if we can get that truck with a plow, then maybe we can open that park up and plow on paper, you know, so people can drive it and get to the trails.
Yeah.
Mr. Bouchard would be very happy if we did that.
That would necessitate some full time, right?
That's the first I've heard of that. And David, I would just say, I probably wouldn't be in favor of a plow park because you guys, unless you had an employee who was also certified as a plow operator and find personally with the truck, turning over the DPW or truck over and asking the highway department to get the plowing in their schedule after they've been on the road. But they're supposedly insured, trained operators.
I like the idea of having it open in the winter though.
Absolutely.
I think it's definitely someone we should explore.
You have troubles talking about the winter, snowmobiles up there, do you have trouble with that?
Nothing that's been communicated to us.
They're on the school property behind me. They're not at the park.
Yeah, that's I, we, we've had, we've had dirt bike issues.
There was some.
I've never been approached about a snowmobile.
With the fencing, it's really.
Yeah, and it's not a lot of room in the woods to be. Truck trails. No, to my knowledge, we haven't had any of that. We have had dirt bikes.
The reason I have, when I was up here, saying you have a sign.
Yeah, you're right. There is one there. You're right.
Is there an hour sign outside by any chance?
There's what?
An hour, is there an hour sign?
An hour?
Like.
Nine to eight.
Park open sign outside with a.
There's one, there's one up there somewhere. There's one of them. There's one of the bathhouses, one of the gates. And then we were just talking about, we have to get the park closed sign up there. I mean, the transition, the transition from previous employee to disemploying has not been smooth. A lot of things that we don't know, we don't know, and we're kind of finding out as we go along.
Great, thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Before the crosswalk on Summers Road, I've requested, you have to have permission of the gaming commission, it has to sign off on the plan. So it's now before then, I'm waiting for the sign off. In a discussion, they suggested that. I know they, they didn't disagree with the purchase of that digital radar device on wheels. But they suggested this. So I sent off to that company for an ad. They're suggesting that some kind of combination of these, like down here.
These are like the portable ones that police have right now, right?
Well, these, these would be stationers.
Right, right. They, they're mountable, but they have, that looks pretty much.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, they're becoming popular. So that you would mount them and they'd be permanently established.
So is that different than what you were looking at before?
I wasn't looking at, I was looking at, well, we, we do have this digital radar device on wheels. We were looking at signs that would flash, but they suggested we look at that. They said it's becoming increasingly popular. So. What I showed.
Before the crosswalk.
Yeah. It's, it's been demonstrated that those devices that measure your speed have a good effect. I mean, they, they slow people down and they really work.
And they're suggesting you put that, that speed sign before the crosswalk, but we still get the crosswalk pushed above.
Yeah.
Cross, right?
And you go both sides at some distance from the crosswalk. You'd have those signs.
On the way to, you know, heading south. You have a gas station. You know, people, they see this, the car stopping to turn on the main street, you really have to think about that traffic flow right there. South to north, yeah, south to north. Yeah, but the other way, there's an intersection and now adding a sign.
So the gaming commission has abundant of funds, apparently. Mrs. Darlow told me that they have three grant programs. First of all, she said, do you have enough money? Now, in all my years in government, no government officials ever asked us, do you have enough money? Because we have more to give you if you want. They have a two-hundred thousand, a five-hundred thousand, and a one-million-dollar grant program. So that, she said, well, what else would you do? I said, well, we could redesign the intersection where we discussed a tip project a while back. I said, there's a design for a sidewalk that'd be controversial, but you know, that's perhaps something to reconsider. But they clearly will give us more. We have, if we have projects related to the summer, the Allen and Summers Road corridor, they, they will give us more money. So it's worth thinking about. And they, I guess the casinos are contributing a lot of money into this fund. And more money is available.
What do we need to do to get the money? Do we have to have that written plan?
I think we would, we would again, have to submit a project to the.
The sidewalk.
Get it approved and then they would plug in more money. So. I mean, the first responsibility we have though is to get this project done. And then we can think about, we can think about more. All right, we have our town accountant. What news do you bring from the financial world?
Thank you for stopping.
Thank you for stopping.
Can I go now? Yeah, this is a, an old, you guys have to.
I got one like this at home.
Carbona?
So a couple little, a couple little, you were able to just straighten out and basically.
This is.
I can handle it. Bob, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Just, just.
Yeah, okay.
Is that for the nap?
What?
Is that for the nap?
Well, I don't think so.
In all my years, I've never seen a year like this. We have so few accounts that are overdrawn and some accounts we knew were going to be overdrawn, like the assessors, principal assessor and the clerk in there, we knew that. We knew we were going to be overdrawn in in election expenses, but then we got state money last week to cover it. Yeah, we got mandate reimbursement, so that's about forty-one hundred dollars there. We don't have to raise that, that goes. So basically, we're looking at, and I don't know why the town reports thing.
That seems, why is town reports over so much?
Well, because we haven't increased that, that line item for as long as I've been here.
Right, we cut the number down to.
Well, we also increased the numbers. We also have color. And it, and it costs.
The only increase this is the Roosevelt administration.
Yeah.
Which one?
Teddy or?
And the, the green shoots cost, I think, almost as much as the town reports do. It's crazy.
So if you go down to Board of Appeals clerical, that might just be a posting error somewhere along the line. Because a planning board clerical was quite a bit left in that. So somewhere along the line, I think there's a posting error there. So I'll look at that. You won't have to make any decisions on that. Obviously, you don't make any decisions on snow and ice, which was, has been lower than last year, which is very convenient for us. Water district testing, I don't know.
Well, you had Bob flag do more testing of different buildings around here.
It's not part of what.
No, that would.
That would come out of where it would fall.
They did make mention though that there is more fees and the, the prices are going up like contests and stuff like that for.
Well, and it could be that, you know, when the bills got submitted, they might have just got submitted against this account instead of bringing it another place. But that's, you know, eight hundred bucks. That's not a major deal.
That's probably huge, just surprised. It's probably going to need to go up though too in the district expansion.
On page four. Property liability insurance is over by sixteen hundred, but we knew that. Pam's been tracking that. And that's it. I mean, I can remember years when we were camping around to find tens of thousands of dollars to move. Here. I mean, this is great and we're going to return on anything that we don't use, obviously goes into just, it goes, it's a function of free cash.
So do you need action from our board for any of these?
No, I, I was going to just ask that you kind of let me figure it out and then next week, the advisory board is meeting and then I can ask that they want to do and then I'll, I'll set something up for you, both of you to sign afterwards, next time you meet, if that's okay. Unless you had other ideas in the meantime.
Clean and simple, it sounds good.
But there's a change in the meeting schedule. But there's a change in the meeting schedule. I think that's why we needed to get it done.
But no, well, well, they're meeting, they're meeting on the twelfth.
We're not meeting till the nineteenth.
That's all right. That's all right. I've got plenty of time to close this all off. We're just not gonna play, pay any more bills against this. So I got all, you know, timing on it, it's not an issue from here. Yeah, now, now is the interesting time of year for me. We get, you know, we get to wrapping up the year.
We have a trial balance for free cash.
Exactly. Well, after all, everything's all done, plugged in, then we get a balance sheet for free cash. But then the state, you know, wants to confirm all your outstanding receivables. They want to verify your, your, your uncollect, your. Your expenditures, they want to verify your debt. They want to, you know, you're just submitting this big long stuff every year. And that's all goes back to Chelsea when Chelsea went bankrupt. I remember when, you know, when I first started, it wasn't that long ago, you just would send them one piece of paper and they would send you free cash. No certification, no. All you had to do was ask them to certify. Once I got refused because I forgot to ask, believe it or not, but I think we had, I think we had a wonderful year. They've had a great year.
Was a lot of this savings because of COVID, wasn't a lot happening.
You know, we had that same thing last year. And we turned over quite a bit and. It's COVID apart, we were open here in the town hall for a good part of that year last year. So whether or not there's anything that could be specifically related to COVID. You can't, can't say.
You mean gasoline purchase? Gasoline purchase maybe?
Gasoline, that's a good question.
This was pretty cheap last year when everybody was traveling.
Yeah, the gasoline, this is all, these are all new account numbers for me, by the way, so I don't even know where all these, all these things are. But gasoline is up, so you may have to review that town, town meeting. Fall town meeting, because we have turned considerable amount of money back in the past on gasoline. And gasoline purchase has eighteen thousand dollars left. And that's not money they can go spend now.
Right.
It's, that's the magic of June thirty. And with it, even with all of the. All of the cost of closing off the folks from the dispatch. There was enough in the police accounts, the police salary account to handle all that. So that kind of worked out well. Now you can take these home and study them tonight. It is, yeah, sure.
One of the better ones I've seen over the years, like I said, the town's in very, very good shape.
It is. Very, you know, I'm glad to bring you some good news and our collections are up.
Well, like I said, I think the board has been unanimous in saying it's been the action of everybody working for the town to get us in the state.
I, I'd say that all along, that between the people that handle the money and the people that tell us what to raise, the people that collected. The people that put it in the bank and the people that keep track, it's good people working in the right places. We're thirty, we're fifty six years.
Thanks, Cliff.
Yeah, I'll take that approval there and I'll put that on, I'll put that on this week. I didn't want to have to like end up not paying that.
Vehicle replacement schedule, schedule.
Well, we have the update for. Fiscal twenty one mileage as well as maintenance costs for the three largest departments. John has raised some issues about the purchase of police cars.
Well, I'm saying the projection, Bob.
We've got more, more, more work to do, I think, to spread out some of those purchases. We do have two cars that are getting up there in mileage. One of them would be replaced. With the authority from the Maytown meeting, I spoke with the chief and he suggesting that. At the fall town meeting, that another order be brought in to purchase another car. To replace the, the two high mileage vehicles.
I don't think that was my point, Bob. I'm looking more like, you know, you have the schedule for twenty twenty five and. You have three out of the six cars projected to be replaced in one year. We've never done three cars in one year and premium's going forward for the next five years. You're averaging two cars a year being replaced. And we're talking about cars that last longer and why are we going this way? So. I'm kind of questioning the validity of the projections going forward. I think the historical part is pretty accurate. I think Scott's done a good job of providing that information. Uh, the other point, and then we look at fire department, the sheriff pack that speak to this. I'm not sure mileage really means as much for some of the trucks as hours, probably a lot of, probably run. Sitting on the ground.
Right, you know, they're sitting.
Yeah.
Working, they're working, we don't drive.
Right.
Much out of town, so.
Now there's that much factor of hours probably.
Structure fire.
So that might be a more relevant number for some other, other vehicles.
As far as the fire one here, you have the fly car and then that Dodge pickup. You guys are trading those in, right?
Correct.
For the, for the new truck?
Right.
So. Those won't be on here anymore at that point, so the new truck will just replace that.
This is just a snapshot of where we are now. I haven't even included the new car that should have arrived in January. But still hasn't quite arrived. So as soon, as soon as that arrives. You know, I'll make the change here and try and keep this list updated for vehicles that we turn in versus new ones and so forth.
And who set the schedule here to the three, four, seven years, you know, whatever for five, for police?
Well, this was, this was done last year and clearly I guess we have to spend some more time with it.
Well, I'm concerned about car one, the interceptor. It's not getting replaced until twenty twenty five and it's already got high miles and it's got the most expensive repair bills from this year. So why would that one not get replaced before the other one? I don't see that car lasting another five years. Just curious why, why that was put off until.
Uh, the next step is this would go to the capital planning committee. Before we do that, I'll sit with the chief. We'll make adjustments on. The projections and. We'll give you the final copy once. Capital playing committee is reviewed and approved.
Pat, what are you doing with the inoperable brush truck?
We have a committee working now to explore the possibilities of maybe refurbishing it to standard code. Other than that, we have emails going back and forth with Trevor, who's our DCR representative, to give that back to them essentially.
That was the state.
Yeah, government surpluses. They're just not running or is it just not?
It was in bad shape when we got it, we figured we'd use it for parts.
Yeah.
But that plan isn't now working, so now it's kind of.
The other one there, the other brush truck is pretty beneficial, right? Even though it's pretty old, it goes in a lot of tight spots.
Right, anything else in that? Right, appointment of a police officer.
By, by the way, just, just one more point here, vehicle creep. We've added one more vehicle to the inventory since last year.
Yeah, we got rid of one because you just, you combine two fire into one, so.
Yeah, but I mean, that's something to pay attention to every year, I think, just to make sure.
Discussion of, discussion of possibly turning over highway trucks.
It's also second C, sending to the board, Mr. Chairman, the candidate we appointed for a full-time police officer. Sergeant Zega and put together the application process. We did an interview process himself and Sergeant Cooney did the background checks of the two candidates. And Jeff Wojak is the one that came to the top to be appointed for our next full-time. Looking quickly at the letter, says tonight I bring Jeffrey J. Wojak in front of the board of selected to be appointed as a full-time police officer for the Hand of Police Department. Jeff has been a member of the Hand of Police Department for approximately nine years. He served from July two thousand five through April two thousand eight. And most recently reappointed in two thousand fifteen to currently. Jeff currently is employed full-time as a police officer of the Amherst College Police Department. Before that, he was a police officer and sergeant with Mount Polio College. And a one-time dispatcher at South Highland Police Department. Jeff was employed as a heavy mobile equipment mechanic full-time from approximately twenty eleven to twenty thirteen with the Massachusetts Air National Guard. Jeff served honorably with the Massachusetts Air National Guard, obtaining the rank of technical sergeant. Jeff was deployed for one year to Kuwait, retired honorably after twenty three, twenty three years of service. Jeff is a graduate of Massachusetts Special State Police Academy, where he was first in his class. He also holds an associate degree in criminal justice from Polio Community College. Jeff has certifications such as sexual assault investigator, defensive tactics instructor, RAD, bike patrol, field training officer. Jeff is best described as being a smart officer, a pathetic patient who works well within his community. Jeff is married and has two twin daughters. On May nineteenth of this year, twenty twenty one, Jeff was granted a permanent exemption by the municipal police training committee. Is pass all training to become a full-time police officer in Massachusetts. Do I get out for anything else, Sergeant?
We did the background on this. He's worked with us for a number of years. You know, I personally talked to his prior employers and this is a candidate. That they didn't want to see leave. Like this is a great person, great officer. And if this will benefit our town, you know, bringing him aboard, so. Again, I did the background on him, well, with Sergeant Cooney, and we're very excited to bring him on board.
Jeff, I think it's the third time I'm going to be appointing you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So not to get specific, how close do you live?
Uh, I live in Chickaby, but maybe within the next two years, I would like to probably maybe come out here pretty closer, you know. Family.
Scotty would be third shift or?
So we're not sure yet. If, once after the appointment tonight, we're looking to get him going. He finishes up at the college on Thursday, his last shift Friday. Monday, I can start him on our detective role shift, which is eight to four during the day. How about with our court process? Court is now opening up full volley. So we do need to go over to court with processing complaints and any type of hearings that come along. So that'll be perfect. Uh, I do have a letter out to inside of the department of interest of our detective position that closes on Friday. So there's a good chance, once we're done with our detective position and that, he could be on a second shift. I think that was what we thought possibly.
Yeah, the officers that are on bidet shift now, they, they all have young families, so they're probably, will be staying. We just worked best. Yeah, they are. So, so Jeffrey probably will be moving to the second shift.
Plus, it solves the vehicle replacement problem because we have a bike patrol.
Yes, Mr. Jeff.
Cruiser could bring him up.
So you're saying we're getting bike patrol?
We could.
Jeff, I just want to thank you for your service first. And when did you serve in Cooley?
Back in oh seven to oh eight.
Oh, seven to oh eight. Then you've been part-time for nine years?
Yes, yes.
In, in town here?
Yes.
You know, why do you want to go full-time?
I like the community. I like interacting with the community. I like working with the people in the department. I want to get back. And so get involved with the community even more on a full-time basis.
What, what, Chief, what was the process that you used? You know, for higher, what did you?
So we put that, we, we put the notice in the paper. Then once applicants came in, I think we did, we had fourteen altogether, but.
We were full-time, fourteen. Applications that were, you know, able to be processed, you know, that were, you know, people that had, they had the academy and, you know, all. Qualified applications. So we, we had all the applications, we, you know, I talked to everybody and then we decided based off the applications, the. To have an interview process. We picked the, I think, the top five people for the interview process. We brought the top five people in. And to be honest with you, actually, all, all the top five people that we brought in were, were actually really good. They were. Really good. We could have made any one of them work. We had, but we, we decided on the top two candidates. We did a full, complete background check on the top two, like. From everything, personal background, employment background, I mean, we went full boat on, on the top two candidates. And. We just, we had a staff meeting, we discussed everything that we had and Jeffrey came, came on top of that. To include the fact that he has been working with us for a number of years, so.
He knows the staff and he knows, knows the drill around town.
So our interview board consisted of the three sergeants, myself, and one of our patrol officers, full-time patrol officers. And after that, we had selected to the two candidates to be fully background checked, which was Jeff and no other candidate. And we are tonight.
And how does this fit with the new laws regarding hiring?
Pretty close to where we have to be now after any new hireings that come along. The, the post commission hasn't been set yet. Things may change down the road to where some type of testing process is being asked about. The concern is, is it going to be like a civil service? Because a lot of departments are getting away from civil service. They're not sure how that's going to go. It's individually going to be a department that's going to do a testing process. For our reserve officers, when they first come in, there is a testing process that gets them into the groove. And then when you go up to the full-time. So kind of redundant if you do both. But yes, we are in compliance with the way it's going to move forward. It might change just a little bit more. But for the most part.
He's up to date on all his training, right?
Yes, he is. And so the exemption that, at the end that we talked about, because of his academy and the new bridging of the police reform. Officers like himself are able to bridge up right now to that stage. So he had to do an online. He was brought to the commission of the Mass Training Council. He had to do, first of all, he had to get accepted with all of his training and all of it being up to date. In, in compliance with the new reform law. Then he had to do online training and pass a series of tests. And then he got the certification now, so he's the exemption under the state police, uh, special state police academy.
So good news from Washington that we can use ARPA money for police, any necessary police training. Particularly with regard to reserve officers.
Which that's going to come into play with our reserve officers that we're going to have to be bridging come the next three years.
So is Jeff going to be handling the oil changes?
We can start there. At the minute.
I'd like to second the chief's recommendation of appointing. Officer Jeff Wojcik to a permanent position of the Hand of Police Department, subject to all checks and certifications.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? I want a favor.
Thank you.
Free time, that's it.
That's it. I'm here for good. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
When does he start?
Monday.
Monday, right into it. Very good.
True firefighter. Really didn't scare you away, boy.
This is not, this is gonna be for a call position. So, uh, good evening. Thanks for scheduling us in on your agenda here. Tonight, I'm presenting a candidate, Chris Patrick. Chris Patrick is a Minnetoka graduate, a resident of the town of Hamden. A second-generation firefighter, his father's a. His father's a retired firefighter from Westover. He's also a member of our National Guard. He recently completed his DOD Fire Academy, the Department of Defense that was in.
Texas.
San Antonio. Texas, about a six-month process. So he comes here today, certified as firefighter one-two, with also some aircraft suppression training. He is an EFR, emergency first responder. He holds his NIMS ICS one hundred and seven hundred, which is our incident command system. So he's really squared away, like the officer here, he's just starting his career. So we're happy to hopefully appoint him and kind of mold him into the firefighters that we've been producing and, and he's going to provide some excellent assistance to our, our numbers. With his appointment, that would put our roster at twenty-four, that would be seventeen firefighters and he'll be our seventh probationary to date.
What do you do during the day?
Right now, I'm at Barnes up in Westfield and I'm doing my seasoning days there. I'm on a six-month order to get all my CDCs and all the training that they require at the base at their fire department. I do that Monday through Friday, like six-thirty to four.
No problem making a trade.
No.
So I, Mr. D, are you EMT certified?
Not yet, sir.
Are you working towards that? Is that a goal?
That's definitely a goal of mine.
Yes, sir. So, so side note, action, we've been working with action, they're going to provide actually a course for us.
Okay.
So we're going to be sending, I think, four or so people.
To ride along?
Just to get their full EMT certificates.
We don't pay for that, right?
I believe that's in the contract.
That's in the contract.
Right.
All praise, we don't pay for it.
First off, this is great. I'm a kid from town. You know.
Now you're going to.
Sure, we're creeping out of our chair here, so, you know, I think, Pat, that goes right back to we're talking about getting more in town, you know, excited about it, joining in.
He's passed all our pre- pre-employment. Our new application process is really streamlining. I mean, we interviewed you, what, like ten days ago and here we are tonight, so.
So what's the actual role of probationary firefighter? What can he do?
So he is a firefighter, right, but we just, you know, goes by seniority, so he does. Having the one-two certification now is great, so it'll be a quick kind of how-to on our equipment. And then he'll just learn our SOPs, learn our ways of operations, and then he'll be right in there with us. We do like to keep our probationaries out of actual structure fires, just because we want them a full year of training, having his certification. You know, we can talk about that, but other than that, we throw them right into the fire essentially. But yeah, and like we say in our initial interview, it's, it's, the department will give you what you put into it. You want to come every week and learn and train, your, your career path will expedite and.
What did you do in Texas?
The DOD Fire Academy and basic training.
He was also our intern at Wilbraham Fire. He was our, his senior year, he did internship with us, so I know, and he was one of our, our best interns at that time.
So, based on the recommendation of Deputy Chief Patrick Ferro, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Patrick to the role of probationary firefighter. Based on all requirements, regulations that you guys have.
Any further discussion or favor?
You were worried, you were worried after seeing the officer.
Don't be there.
Appreciate that.
Well, we talked about the bike patrol.
You guys do a bike patrol too?
Oh, nice.
Do you want me to call them or you guys, I can, I can come on the radio maybe.
Just update, I wanted to get some updates on the projects because they're not going to be next week, so just see where we are.
Cancel, right? They get it?
Yeah.
There's one second left.
Just let you know the screen turned on again. All right, so.
Updates. So. A message from Marcus. Won't surprise you here, they're very close. It's not quite, not quite there.
Okay, well, we're close to giving him money, but not quite.
What are we waiting on from them? There's some issue with the tower. Right, one of the towers.
I'm not.
Well, yeah, that, there was some issue. That Marcus said that they couldn't control involving some necessary changes that are required at one of the towers.
That isn't, that doesn't have anything to do with Mark Barber's poll, which is where, I don't know if it's Peter that's on there, it was a towers.
Yeah.
The, the tower at the landfill or is it another location?
I think it was at the landfill. Garage project, the cutoff for bids is the fourteenth of this month. We did a walkthrough, had what a few potential bidders show up. We've sent them a lot of documents. I feel confident that we're going to see a number of bids and the competition will help, certainly with keeping the price down. As far as the water project, they were supposed to do test pourings last week, but they were postponed and. They didn't get to it today. I think it's, it's going to happen.
Yeah, they're going to wait, they have to wait for the, the water.
Better weather, better weather.
But we are, we are ahead of schedule in here because as you remember, the survey was going to be eight weeks, we got that done.
A week.
Yeah, basically, so. Another thing to mention would be the solar project. We have a meeting of planning board tomorrow, but I think, Bob, we need to push ahead on that CR for that property.
Yes, I had a call on that today from Steve McDonough. They are still interested in the other option. I, I said, I think the consensus here is going to be for CR. And that's, that's where we left it, so.
I said conservation.
Their meeting, their meeting with the planning board, in the meeting with the planning board tomorrow night, and they are confident that that will be a wrap-up and they'll get a vote. So.
Is it tomorrow?
Wednesday, yes.
Correspondence, we have a letter from the governor's office congratulating us on our completion of our wage and, and classification plan. And the trans best, and transparency best practices and, right? Important initiative, great job, thanks, so, thank you. We have a letter from the Hamlet County Retirement Board. I had sent the, I had sent a letter to them requesting some information, particularly about the two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in fraudulent invoices that they paid. And their response was that they've sent out letters to vendors requesting a copy of a contract or authorized order. If no contract or authorization is produced, then the request is made for the return of the payment. Well, we already know that the auditors try to track down these companies and they don't exist. So I've suggested to them that they file with their insurance company, their liability bond for two things. Number one, fraudulent, which would be a crime, and number two, for failing to fulfill fiduciary responsibility. So we'll see what happens there. The second thing I asked about was the, the people who had, with the violation of the chapter two sixty-eight A, the Ethics Commission. They said that this item is pending, a review and recommendation by state agencies. And the chairman, Mr. Thoreau, has paid back another three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the rental of his condo on the Cape. He's still chair, he's up there, he's still chair. He said he would resign, but he's been taking his visit, he hasn't given a date yet.
Importantly, though, his term expires in December. So if he persists, I think it'd be important to try and rally support for another candidate.
And then they also, they were illegally paying social security for the, I don't know what they did. Yeah, they were legally paying social security for the members of the board and as well as their attorneys. And the Massachusetts law prohibits government employees from paying into social security. So they've attempted, so what they did was they, they paid the share of the, the employee paid in, they reimbursed the employee. Perak then said, you can't reimburse the employee, they have to send the money back. So the employees sent the money back to the board. The only one who didn't was Mr. Thoreau. Right? He wants to appeal that challenge. So that's where that stands. And lastly, at the last meeting, one of the board members, Mr., forgive me for mispronouncing his name, Mr. Carl Schmeisel, I believe his name is pronounced. He tried to explain that the eighty-seven thousand dollars they paid in fees for the bank account was offset by the eighty-seven thousand dollars they got in interest. So he was very pleased that it was a wash. I tried to explain to them in a letter that if you hadn't put it in a bank account that was fee-bearing, you would have made eighty-seven thousand dollars out of this. But it was difficult to explain that.
I want to hear that, huh?
That's where we are on that.
Well, I mean, everyone knows that in the public sector, we are not a social security state.
No.
And you had two attorneys on staff who apparently didn't say anything. Those attorneys also understand that they're not eligible to take health insurance and they did.
Two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So we're on, we're continuing on that. We also received a letter from the Pioneer Valley Planning Council, asking if anyone was interested in volunteering to be on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which approves federal funding for bridge and major infrastructure projects in Hampshire, Hamlet County.
From our district.
From our district. Our district is, and I belched out room field, Ethan Metal, Granby, Hammond, and I sent in that I would be interested in that.
Boy, since retirement.
Got some time now.
Let's tie my other houses. That's it, it gets.
Hey, this is, this is going to be very important to have representation if the town decides to do a tip project here. Because even though everyone will say it's all done very objectively, there is a little horse trading that goes on.
And particularly if we get, if this infrastructure bill ever passes. And lastly is, I don't know, this from the HCA Assessment Management, you want to explain that one?
Oh, yeah, everyone, this just came in, I did print copies for everyone, there's an extra copy.
You want that?
Yeah. It's a proposal of forty-four hundred dollars, I believe, for insurance appraisal services. So they would go out and conduct a completed appraisal of our properties. And we've talked about, certainly in the Capitol Planning Committee, about having some upgrading of our records for our buildings. And then the second big step is obviously some of the smaller items like computers and other electronic products that we should be, we should have an inventory of. In fact, I just asked the question.
It's going to be necessary anyhow for Gatsby and I think it's seventy-five is the current number.
Gatsby seventy-five, yeah, that would be open.
Right, so this might as well, the factors right into it, same data we're going to need.
Right.
The money, I would take it on property and liability, which unfortunately, we know we're going to be short because of the increase. Well, so we're going to need a transfer in the fall anyhow for, so we have enough money to pay for this and I would recommend the board do it.
And they do the contents as well.
I thought you might want to keep it for a week, but if you're all set, someone will sign, the chair could sign. Sign one copy.
All right.
I've got this recycling agreement basically from the Health Department, basically renewal of our recycling agreement for another year.
Yeah, who's it with?
So wait a minute.
That's through the merth, all right?
Yes.
Through the merth and it's waste land.
Yeah.
Weren't they paying us at one time? Were we still paying?
Nothing there's a market in China.
For authority for the, for the health slash town, they're certain to sign the renewal of the agreement.
Anything, select the reports?
We have the meeting tomorrow, again, housing authority, going to meet with CPA and talk about their requests, which may be this fall or maybe in spring. COA doesn't meet for another week.
Administrative report?
Okay, we've been over some of it already. I did get another call from Sue West, the agent, who said, quote, she is assertively, they're still assertively looking for alternative housing. For the facility, residents of the facility on Oakville. We've already mentioned the.
Have we heard any recent complaints?
No.
Speeding or anything like?
Well, speeding and Pam talked with her about the complaint on speeding. I did, I did say to her, you took some action there, and she said, we did. She said, have you had any complaints? I said, no, we have not had any additional complaints. And again, we're restarting regular meetings with boards and committees so that they can just give the board of selectmen and, and the public an overview of the work that they're doing. I've had a couple of sessions with Craig here, a member of the board, about our fiber optic line. And we did, Pam did dig out the contract that we have for service here. It's a thirty-six month contract, expired June fifth. And so the next step would be to meet with them to talk about another contract, which would include a much faster system. And in my opinion, at less cost, three hundred and twenty dollars a month, which was a hefty price to pay for twenty-five megabits. So I, Craig and I also discussed contacting Whip City Fiber. I did place a call to them, their person who can provide information is going to call me. I thought she'd call me this afternoon, but I'm no doubt I'll get a call tomorrow. And I thought we would talk about a couple of different items. Number one, are they in a position to step in and use what I think is the fiber line along Main Street, which was built with state money, was it not?
Yeah.
The ones, the three, yeah. And they're bringing it into the building. Apparently what, what Spectrum has done is that they've connected and brought it into the building. And it's that contract that has expired. Is there any competition available to another contract with Spectrum? That's what we're going to try and find out. And the other step is to talk to them about doing what they just finished doing in the town of Beckett, that is bringing fiber to everyone in town. And what the cost of that would be, because this is one of the, this is one of these expenditure items that is authorized in the ARPA legislation.
Yeah, but there's only fifty people in Beckett.
Yeah, no, but it's a big spread out town, big spread out town, so, you know, putting the fiber on poles, I know there's some challenges with that. But I just thought, you know, when I get them on the phone, we'll have a conversation, see what they can do. I know that they're, they had a, when I was looking up their phone number, I saw an article where they're taking on nine new communities. So they're really moving quickly.
West Springfield, I think, is going to be one of them.
I can also report that the police patrolman union certification occurred. There was a new, new union for our police patrolman, the New England Police Benevolent Association. There was a new, new union for our police patrolmen, the New England Police Benevolent Association. Uh, they were chosen by a vote of seven to two over the IBPO. Uh, I've had a conversation and you know, are aware that we've had conversations with both the union and the chief about getting together. Or some bargaining over another contract. Ransomware insurance, for eighteen hundred dollars, we can have up to a hundred thousand dollars in ransomware insurance and twenty-five thousand. Right, so I think that's a good deal. Um, I wasn't worried about ransomware. Because they seemed, at least the, you know, the Russian criminals seem to be focusing on larger communities. But apparently we have some local bad actors as well who are going after smaller towns. So I think it makes sense for us to. Not only, uh, see that we're as prepared as we can be and Entree says that, uh, we're ninety percent safe, but it could happen. And having some insurance there, I think, makes, makes sense for the town.
Where's the insurance coming from? Is that?
This would, this would be the insurance that we have with Maya. So, I'm, I'm sorry, the insurance that we have with Barry Insurance, not Maya. Maya is, has a proposal. That I just read this afternoon, but, uh, we're going to look for a little competition before coming to you for that, so. The other item I, I, I described to you there, uh. And, and more good news, there are ten applicants, uh, three apparently very highly qualified. For the position of health inspector. So I think there's every likelihood that we will have someone onboard as a health inspector in the shared health services. System, uh, in time for the retirement of, uh, Laura McCool on the thirtieth of July. We've had some bug complaints. Actually, I'm one of them. Um, there are ants all, all over my desk.
Yeah, we contacted him.
So no more snakes, I mean.
Snakes are gone, but there's air rigs and water bugs and.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to take care of this, but I just thought. Okay, be important for you to know and for anyone watching to know that town is not going to ignore this problem.
Thank you.
People whose offices want to resolve.
That's the report. Also, uh, while I broke down HCA, which you've signed, and I did send you something regarding. EV charging. Did you see that today?
I did, yeah.
So.
What, our police station?
No. Behind the building here.
So, I thought you said Eversource was offering to put one in here for us for free.
They will. We can do that as well.
Yeah, when we do that, we get it installed, properly installed.
Right, yes.
And then, yeah, talk about the other thing.
Okay, you know, we talked about it, but I, we've never had a decision to move forward, so if you're.
Well, now that we have somebody with a car.
Willing to do that, um.
I think I remember previous meetings where you, nobody was in favor of it before. Yeah, but I think it'd be good. It's the only way of the future, electric charging, plus. We can make money off of it because when people plug into it, they put their credit card in, they can set whatever kilowatt.
That's the other thing. Uh, you don't have to charge eight-point-two cents per kilowatt hour. You can charge ten cents. And so that'll. Be a bit of a revenue source. And I, I think I mentioned in my letter that I paid a usurious sum in one of these. The charging stations where, uh, the owner wanted to make a lot of money.
Well, we've. Yes, to put the, the.
Let's start the process.
And we can get state grant.
At some point also, I'd like to look at, put lines in the parking lot, will you?
Yeah. Oh, here?
Yeah.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Right.
We've talked about that so many times, but I don't know the reluctance.
I don't know why.
To do so.
Anything else to come before the board? Saying none out there.
So it's two weeks from yesterday.
Two weeks, yes, the nineteenth, nineteenth.
Nineteenth, Monday the nineteenth.
Make a motion to return.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
So I did it for you a couple of weeks ago, uh. A week.
Are you off next week, Bob, or?
Yes.